He's talking about roll call wise?
Yeah. Just get to how many members are here?
We're at three, right?
Three.
Three. We are at three.
So you don't have... Okay, fine. So I think we're... Eric, can you do it?
We have two.
Check two to come from the utility district, Robert Peterson and Don Ellis. They had a regular meeting this evening, but they're still at that. Yeah, welcome. Good evening. I'm Carl Lee Matt, sorry, you may not remember. We'll go ahead and do some introductions around. Most of you probably have not that. Eric, I'll let Eric introduce himself. He's going to be the primary instructor for this evening. A lot of material to cover, but we're going to do it relatively quickly.
Thank you, Carl. Now, one thing you should know is we are being videotaped this evening, so if you have any questions or some feedback, go ahead and use your microphone so that the people that'll eventually be watching this can hear what we're saying. What I'd like to do is go around the tables and have a... Give me your name, which jurisdiction you're with, and what do you hope to get out of this evening's presentation? My name, as Carl mentioned, is Eric O'Brien. I work with King County's Office of Emergency Management, where I am their Training and Exercise Program Manager. I had previously been working for the City of Seattle and others for about 25 years as a civil engineer. My most recent project was the Alaskan Way Viaduct and Board Tunnel Replacement Project. I also was involved in Mercer West. But in the last four years that I was at Seattle, I worked on a lot of emergency management issues. So I was involved at the city's Emergency Operations Center when they had the duck-bus collision up on the Aurora Bridge. I was also heavily involved in the Greenwood gas explosion. Both of these we'll bring up tonight and kind of relate them to some of the things that you're going to be learning. So why don't we go around the table, and I'll tell you some of my expectations once I hear what you're hoping to get out of this class.
Okay. That on?
Yes.
Yes, okay. John Wright, council member from Lake Forest Park. And I was a member of the Emergency Management Advisory Committee for a while here, and I also started the construction program for the PCERN 911 Radio Communications Replacement Project. No longer there, I retired from the county, but I'm here hopefully to get some training on emergency management.
So Milton Curtis with Kenmore City Council. And I'm familiar with some of the program from a different perspective. I worked at Evergreen Hospital, so we did a lot of work with this. But as I was reading the full presentation, I said, "Ooh, looks like we, as city officials, need to have some responsibility and knowledge here, too." I thought we just turned it over to other smart people, and they did all the work. So the question is, what do I, as a council member, need to know?
Thank you. Summer Riddle, Lake Forest Park City Council. I know very little about this world, so I'm here to learn everything. I do know that, you know, in the next, you know, few years, the likelihood of something coming up is high, whether it be a large crash on Bothell Way or something even larger. And again, yeah, as city council members, we're certainly looked to, to help guide our citizens. So what does that look like, and where do I point them to?
I'm Mark Phillips, also from the Lake Forest Park City Council. I just want to have a better understanding of the organizational response that happens, the major features of that, and I guess specifically, too, in terms of a role that council members or other electeds might have in that process.
Stacy Dunizki, Kenmore City Council. I really enjoyed the CERT class, so it'll be interesting going into a lot more detail and see how the ICS structure works.
I'm David Baker, Kenmore City Council Mayor. And I am just trying to get a better understanding of what it is we would do in an emergency.
Nigel Herbig, Deputy Mayor of Kenmore. And I'm hoping to learn a bunch of information that I never actually have to put to use.
I'm Carl Lindsay, City Manager. I'm just here to find out what my electeds are learning. I'm Marshall, Kenmore City Council, hoping to see that we're getting ready to be...
Deborah Srebnik, Kenmore City Council, and just interested in the role of the council, the staff, and how that plays into the role of the county.
Brent Smith, Kenmore City Council. And I have pretty limited knowledge on what you do. And I know the basics of it, but I actually know very little on the actual process and the details of it. So I'm actually really excited to learn more about what it is.
I'm Dave Maron. I'm a Fire Commissioner, North Shore Fire Department. And I'm here just to witness cooperation and collaboration of this group. It shouldn't be unusual, but it is unusual to have a utility district, two cities, and a fire department all form a collaborative emergency management organization. So congratulations.
Rick Verlindif, recently elected Fire Commissioner, 30 years with Seattle Fire. So I've manned their EOC, both fire and city, with the Nisqually earthquake and major incidents. So I've been through the ICS system. I'm actually credentialed through Carl for this Emergency Operations Center, but haven't actually done anything yet with it, so...
Do you gentlemen want to introduce yourselves back there?
I'm Chief of Police. I didn't know if I was collaborating. So if any elected official... I'm Carl Lee Matt, I'm your emergency manager. That should get a lot of elected...
Sure. So it sounds like you're all in the right room. We are not going to be doing a deep dive into emergency management or the Incident Command System. There's this pyramid up here. This lists some of the major classes that are available through FEMA. The bottom two, you can take online. ICS-100, ICS-200. If you like what you hear tonight, I would encourage you, try those out and learn a little bit more about what goes on with emergency management. Then you start getting to ICS-300 and 400. But all told, this is about 40 hours worth of work. Solid week. We've got hour and a half. So you're literally going to be learning about 1/20th, but we're taking a slice out of that entire pyramid. So we'll cover everything that you need to know as council members, as electeds, as members of the local fire district, and when the utility district joins us later this evening, get... Help them also. Because when you have these incidents, it's not just your fire guys or your police or whatever. It ends up being a group project. The biggest example out of that was the Greenwood explosion. There was a... Most of you were around here about two, three years ago when that blew up. Gas leak happened in the building, Seattle Fire responded, building exploded. Suddenly, it's a crime scene. So now you have PSE. You've got the fire department, you've got the police, you've got the City of Seattle's Department of Transportation because our road is blocked. You've also got PSE has a stake in the game. They have to re... Everything, return things to normal, and the state Utility Commission also needs to investigate, why did this happen? So we'll get into what kind of structure and how do all those people play well together. So lay down a couple of guide rules this evening. I'm not looking to do any gotchas on anybody, just an informative discussion that we're all going to have. We have a very short amount of time, so if we ask some questions, feel free to just blurt things out. Don't sit back and wait for somebody else to answer the question. What I'm looking for you to get out of this evening's class is an overview of everything that happens and what Carl and I and others in emergency management are going to be doing, and where you can provide input and guidance to help guide the process. And also, so you know where we are now, and then the incident happens, and what's going to happen after the incident. That whole spectrum is going to be important to you as elected officials. So everybody, we're going to spend the majority of our time with this colored slide deck. The rest of the information is provided there for reference. Now, one of the things a very wise professor taught me years ago, it was a very simple class we were taking, he said, "Look, if you're going to go through this stuff, you're going to learn it all today, but if you don't, in a couple of days, it's just going to operate." So as we get through things and discuss them today, it'll make sense. But I'm asking you, please go back this weekend, take another look at it, and then about two weeks from now, just open it up, flip through, and then it'll start to gel a little more. And then when something bad happens, it'll make a lot more sense than if you have to go back and learn it all from scratch. So the things we're going to be talking about are called the Incident Command System, ICS, as we usually abbreviate. Roles in that. And we'll also talk about your responsibilities, give you some terminology. I've got news for you, this is one of the easiest languages you will ever learn. The dictionary is 13 pages long. I'm very bad at languages, but I'm pretty good at this one. Give you an idea of what does your Emergency Operations Center do during an event. And finally, we'll also talk about what happens when we have a major, major event, and how we play well with the feds and the states and other folks. So far? Okay. So does anybody know offhand, what is ICS? Some of you that have maybe been in the fire service. Incident Command System. It's not a rigid set of rules, though, is it?
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline. It's a framework. It kind of tells us all how to operate together. So in your hand, I tried to go through and highlight in shading, pink shading, what the major key points are out of this whole thing, because I don't want you to be able to go back and reference this stuff. Now, one thing we need to cover, sometimes we'll talk about incidents, and sometimes we'll talk about events. Any idea what the difference is between an event? July 4th is an event. The major parades you guys have are an event. High school graduations are an event.
Major to Central.
It's more that you have time to plan. You know this thing's going to be coming up, you can gear up, you can pre-stage things, you can figure out how you're going to respond. Incident is right now. So... One of the things we try and do, though, is be ready to respond in either case. The fire service has preset concepts and plans in place to happen. The police also. Same with emergency management. So how long do you think an event can last? Give me... Throw out some ideas. Throw out some ballpark timeframe. Different incidents you can think of that are very short versus very long. Car accident, fairly short. If there's no fatalities, hopefully we're out in less than 20 minutes. Oh, so it was weeks. Hurricane Katrina, they're still working on the paperwork for that. And that was 2009? Yeah. So the thing to also remember is that the incident doesn't just end at the 11 o'clock news that night. You also have to account for the family relocation, so reunification, I'm sorry. So if there's a school shooting, or in our case where we had the bus was full of student, international students from North Seattle Community College, and they had to get reunited with their family members. Later on, we also had to go back to the bus and get all of their book bags, all of their cell phones, all of it, get it returned to the right person. And some of the things we weren't able to return to them because they were contaminated and had other things going on. So then you also have memorial events. At the time, a year later, as electeds, it kind of behooves you to be paying attention to this long-range stuff that's going to happen and plan some of this out. You're not the incident responder. You're not sitting there at the fire truck trying to direct how things go, but you've got a very good sense of what's coming up. How does this play into rest of what's going to be happening in the city in the future? And how can we kind of get ahead of some of this? So ICS, it's a standardized, on-scene, all-hazards, incident management concept. So we talked about events, 4th of July parades, high school graduations. I encourage Carl and all the other jurisdictions I work with to try and use this Incident Command System for simple things, that you can train some of your volunteers and others, some of your CERT members, in Incident Command System things. Just on the simple stuff, when there's no pressure, everybody has a pretty good idea, okay, there's going to be the group entering the high school, be there for a while, there's going to be a lot of cars, we've got to get in and out, later on, they're going to come out. The parade, it's going to start here, it's going to end here. How do we keep Carl and the Emergency Operations Center informed of where the beginning of the parade is and where the end of the parade is? These are all very good scenarios to just kind of play out and train your people, exercise how things are going to operate. This was a... Incident Command System started back in the early '70s in California. It came out of the wildfires that were happening there. Had loss of life, some of the firefighters, loss of a lot of houses, lot of... Loss of a lot of equipment. And they had a bunch of very smart people, came together, and this wasn't the first iteration of this that they came out with. It took them about two or three iterations, and being pushed back by their command structure that said, "No, that's not good enough. We want you to work on it better." And they got this down, and it was working pretty well. And it was... But it was pretty localized into California. Other fire services had their own Incident Command Systems, but it wasn't based on the same system. Then we had 9/11 in 2001. And the federal government decided, "Okay, we need something where everybody knows what everybody else is doing. If Lake Forest Park has a problem, and they need folks to come over from Kenmore, or both of you have a big enough problem that we need to bring in people from Wenatchee or Yakima, we need to all be speaking the same language, and we all need to know, okay, this is what the incident commander does, this is what the operations section does." So we have common terminology, we have a common structure that we're all using. And starting in 2003, this was formalized, this Incident Command System. They borrowed it heavily from the FireScope project that came out of Southern California. It was revised a little bit in 2008, and then just last year, we're on version 3.0 of this system now. It's still kind of in its rollout, but there hasn't been much change over the last two iterations. It's still pretty much the same stuff. The main things we're trying to do, they had the problem in the early '70s with the safety of the responders. We want to, again, emphasize that. Look out for our first responders. We're also trying to set specific objectives that we can all work as a common unit. And we're also trying to make sure that we're respectful of all of our resources that we're using. Don't want to use too many. We want to make sure we also have enough for all the people that are responding to the event. So let's see. And we'll skip that. Let's go to this top framework right here, where it talks about the federal government on top, and then the state government provides support, and local government is the first response. So I'm with King County. I am here to back Carl up. I will support him in any way I possibly can, and if he needs help, we will try and get it either from other places inside the county, and if we can't find it inside other jurisdictions in the county, or from the county ourselves. Not the first place we go for stuff. Around the area. And if local counties nearby have it, then they'll start reaching out elsewhere around the state. And only then, if nobody else in the state has enough resources available to help us, then we start reaching out to the feds. Feds are going to put out a call to other states, and we will get information from them and find out, okay, I've got this many people available, it's going to cost you this. Usually, those type of things only happen on major things, like hurricanes or major earthquakes. We... How many of you know what the Cascadia Subduction Zone is? Show of hands? Okay. Major fault line, 150 miles. It ruptures every 300 to 500 years. We know that the last time it ruptured was January 21st, 1700, because there was a tidal wave, and they could never figure out where that... Until about the late '80s around here, there was a lot of geotechnical work where they realized there was a major earthquake, and from some of the tree rings and other evidence, they could kind of ballpark about where it was. And then somebody collaborated with the Japanese, and they were able to nail it down to the exact date. So about 318 years ago was the last time this happened. And we talk about a 300 to 500-year cycle on this thing. So, you know, we're not do-do, but it's something we try and keep attention on and pay attention to how to respond to these type of things. Other thing you'll notice kind of around that box, we talk about individuals and households, private sector, and nongovernmental organizations. So what are some examples private need in an emergency? Ham radio operators would be good. We had an issue with Seattle schools where staff was going to go on strike, and we needed a lot of lunches for students. Turns out Costco makes bag lunches and can make hundreds of them. So it's not just what can we in government do for folks, but is there a resource in private industry that we can also look to? You mentioned that you have been involved in CERT. The more we can get neighbors helping their neighbors, the more we can kind of free up the fire service to deal with some of the major things that they're more suited to. Likewise, we try and reach out a lot to individuals and households and tell them, "Look, you need to be prepared to be on your own for three days or two weeks, or whatever you can do, the more you can prepare yourself." And that's so the fire service can respond to folks and rescue them instead of having to worry about getting water, food, or whatever. How many of you know how long a person survived without water? Or without food? Wild guess. What was that?
Three days.
Three days without water.
You're both...
Food, I think you can go two weeks. Water is the big equalizer. That's why we would really like to have the general public be self-capable for at least three days, so that we can focus on rescuing the people that don't have access to water that are trapped before we start trying to recover everything else and restoring all the other... We... The water districts and everybody else are trying to restore the water lines, but we have to also let the responders deal with trying to rescue people. So let's see. So far, we've used the term Incident Command System, ICS. The next thing they want to talk about is the National Incident Management System. And this ICS part we've talked about is just a little portion of a bigger thing called NIMS, National Incident Management System. So what NIMS does is it provides a really consistent process across the country. If your firefighters were to go to Florida, would they know what somebody is talking about if they were using the NIMS system?
Been there.
Been there, done that. What incident was that you were at?
They went to a hurricane.
To a hurricane? Okay. Was it pretty seamless?
Uh...
Okay. You had some idea. It was kind of like a different dialect. You could still understand the language, but maybe some of the nuances were a little different. What year was that?
Um, 2006.
Okay. Okay. It enables the state, and the counties, and the local governments all to work together. So from that perspective, it helps us out a lot on these incidents. And again, all we're trying to do is prevent loss of life and efficient use of resources and bring the incident to a close as quickly as possible. Now, I mentioned earlier on that I was involved in the duck-bus collision on Aurora. That was a state highway, much like 522 out here. It didn't have a concrete bearing, opposing lanes, much like you have out here. It was going in one direction and a really big heavy vehicle going in the other direction. Now, you may not get these duck vehicles going through here, but you get dump trucks, you get concrete trucks. So these kind of incidents can happen anywhere at any time. And it's traffic things. Bothell had their big fire last year. That shut down a large part of the... Quite a while. And that was a lot of fire that... Do mutual aid on that?
About 80.
... Role. People knew what they were supposed to do and who they were supposed to talk to. Now, we'll get into this... I guess now is as good a time as any. If you were working with the utility district, and they came up to one of your firefighters and said, "Hey, I need you to go and put some water over here and do this for me," would your firefighter go along with that?
Well, we hope they understand.
Right. Likewise, I'm guessing if the utility district were there and they asked, and one of your firefighters said, "Hey, you know, we're not getting enough water pressure inside our station. Could you guys just put a 10-inch line inside our station, upsize it a little for us?" No. Firefighters don't... Do... Cops don't tell fire what to do, and so on and so forth. You have your own chain of command. So later on, we'll get into a discussion of what's called Unified Command. That's where you get one person from the fire department, one person from the fire department, or whatever other agencies are involved, all working together to solve the common objectives. Back to our handout. National Incident Management System, it's not a rigid thing that says, "You will do this, you will do that. If it's a fire, you're going to do this. If it's a gas leak, you're going to do that." But it tells us in general, okay, you were going to set some objectives. You've got a unified command, or you have one incident commander. They have subordinates under them, doing very specific roles. Some people are taking care of contracts, other people are ordering equipment, other people are putting out the incident, taking care of resolving whatever the incident is. It's basically a framework. There's very specific terms. We already talked about the glossary. And it's an organizational setup. Skip ahead. Let me see what page that's on. Towards the middle, there's a page that says, "Who Does What?" In the upper right-hand corner, kind of in pink. That's the basic layout of what the Incident Command Structure looks like. You have the incident commander on top, you have an operations section below that, a planning section next to the operations section, logistics, and finance administration. Now, what I've got up here on the wall behind here, and you're welcome to come up and take a look after we're done talking, is this chart for the Deepwater Horizon incident. And that was... Does anybody want to explain what the Deepwater Horizon was?
Oil rig down in the Gulf.
Oil rig down in the Gulf. They had a fire, then the platform exploded. Suddenly, you've got oil spreading from Texas to Florida, miles and miles of oil all over the coastline. And they still follow the same basic structure. There was an incident commander. Underneath that, in the pink over there, is the operations section. Next to that is the planning section. Next to that is logistics. And next to that is admin finance. Now, there's 971 positions throughout that whole... That's the basic layout of what the incident command structure looks like. You have the incident commander on top. You have an operations section below that, a planning section next to the operations section, logistics and finance administration. Now, what I've got up here on the wall behind here, and you're welcome to come up and take a look after we're done talking, is this chart for the Deepwater Horizon incident. And that was a- does anybody want to explain what the Deepwater Horizon was? Oil rig down in the Gulf. They had a fire, then the platform exploded. Suddenly you've got oil spreading from Texas to Florida. Miles and miles of oil all over the coastline. And they still follow the same basic structure. There was an incident commander underneath that. In the pink over there is the operations section. Next to that is the planning section. Next to that is logistics. And next to that is admin finance. Now, there's 971 positions throughout that whole thing because this thing took months and months and probably still working on the paperwork. And it involved multiple states and many, many jurisdictions. But it still follows the same basic framework that the fire guys and others do to this day on local events. Now, play a little game. Now, this, there's one problem with NIMS and the glossary and all that. People have trouble trying to remember how we describe things. Some things are a really important thing and it's a type one or it's less important and it's type three or it's more important. So I've tried to make up a little chart here to try and help. And I kind of gave things away. So if you have a type one incident, you are making the national news. People are hearing about that across the country. If you have a type five incident, that's kind of your basic 911 call. Somebody's having a bad day. But this is what you guys do every day. You can deal with this. Once it starts getting more complex, starts spooling up the Emergency Operations Center, we might be at a type three. And then like I said, if we get up to type one, that's something that's on the national news. That's a duck bus collision. That's a multi-day fire. That's major loss of life or something like that. So this will come back in a little while. So, we talked about what National Incident Management System is and what it's not. It's not a rigid thing. It can be applied to anything. I've even seen people try and apply this to an event that many of us go through with lots of terror and dread called a wedding. You have an incident commander. It's either the mom or the mother-in-law. You have a finance admin section. That's dad. You have an operations section. That's either the bridesmaids or the bride herself and so on and so forth. And you can kind of play this game and fill a lot. It's very flexible. This organizational system works on a lot of different things. Okay. So we're going to skip ahead to part two, trying to keep things on schedule here. We already talked about that this can work for any type of incident of any size, from a wedding to major oil spill across the Gulf states. It allows personnel from the Northwest to go down to the Gulf states and help out in a hurricane. And it also provides logistical support and the documentation is consistent from one event to another so we all know what each other is talking about. And it's the most cost-effective way we've got so far for bringing some of these incidents under control. Now, one of the things that's a little bit interesting is different people and some of the roles that they play in some of this stuff. When I was working for the city of Seattle, I was a project manager and kind of a senior engineer on things. But when I was in the Emergency Operations Center, I was what was called the Infrastructure Branch Director. I had control over what Seattle Public Utilities, their water and sewer folks were doing. Seattle City Light, the electric- electrical people. Puget Sound Energy had people reporting to me. Metro Transit had people reporting to me. All the infrastructure stuff was reporting to me. And in that case, I was able to help guide them and get them what they needed and get the- any incident we had under control. And this ranged from communications where fiber optics lines were maybe cut or ice and snow events. And so the person who has a day-to-day job may have a different role that they play in one of these incidents or at an emergency operations center or on scene. It all depends on what their capabilities are and what their knowledge are. It's a lot less title-oriented and more what are your capabilities and that- your role on that incident. Need to be aware of is the terminology thing. I already said we have a common terminology. And one of the things that confused me up until probably about a year ago, I thought they kept talking about simple language. Does everybody know what simple language means? As government agency folks, we're supposed to use words that everybody can understand. We're not supposed to use a lot of legalese or try and hide things behind big words. Try and use the simplest word that'll describe. That's kind of what we're talking about here. But all they're saying is a common terminology. It's not- some of the words have a very specific meaning. And that's why this glossary of 13 pages is so important. And I brought a copy. You're welcome to come back later on and take a look at it. If you have a question about what somebody is trying to tell you during an incident or Carl or somebody is trying to explain and the word doesn't make sense or you think it has some other- ask for clarification or make a copy of this glossary and take a look at what they're saying. There may be some descriptions of a camp versus a base. A base is where we have workers and equipment. Work is being done there. A camp is where people are resting or getting food or what have you. We often use them interchangeably in regular life, but in incident command things, they have very specific meanings and we need to make sure that we're using the right. Chain of command. We talked about this a little bit. Do you remember what we said earlier about chain of command with the fire department and the utilities? What did we say? Fire guys don't tell utilities what to do and utilities don't tell fire and so on. You've got one line of command. You've got eight- every person in the field has one person that they're responsible to and they get direction from them and so forth, all the way up the chain of command and all the way back down the chain of command. That's one of the things that helps keep people safe. We also have unity of command. So one of the things we do, we spend a lot of time on is this big fancy schedule that's nicknamed the Planning P. Basically because if you had a solid line down here, it would look like a big giant P. And what it is, is a setup that says, okay, an incident or an event happened. How do we initially start responding to it? And then we start getting into a circular process of maybe every day we're doing this or maybe every 12 hours. It depends on how. Carl, what do you guys have as an operational period? 12 hours? So every 12 hours, he's kind of going through this. And they're going to develop an incident action plan. If you flip to the paperwork that we handed you, there's a form in there called an ICS 201. Looks like this. And I keep one in my briefcase and I also keep one under my desk at work. It's designed that if you had a stubby pencil and something bad happened, you could sit there and draw a map of what you understand the incident to be right then, quick written summary of what's going on, who you've got responding to the scene, what kind of equipment you've got. So what's your organization chart? And then if the fire service showed up, I could hand them my ICS 201 and they would have a really good idea of what was going on with my traffic accident or my bridge collapse or what was happening. So likewise, if there's an initial incident that happens, let Carl do his thing, let the fire guys do their thing. But one of the things I bring you initially is an ICS 201 just to give you a brief overview of what they know at the time. As we move further into the process, somewhere around here, they are preparing an IAP, an Incident Action Plan. So it's like that ICS 201, but on steroids. So a lot more detail about people and their contact information, what the weather is expected to be. What are our objectives for the next 12 hours, for this next operational period? One of the big things out of this whole ICS process is management by objectives. So right here, they're developing what their objectives are going to be for the next 12 hours. And then they're preparing, okay, how are we going to meet those objectives? Okay, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to do that. Okay. Then they're going to say, okay, if I'm going to take and have these folks putting out the fire, I'm going to need 12 engines and a helicopter and they're going to need food. I'm going to need this and over here, I'm going to need this. So here they're planning out, what kind of resources do I need? Then they're putting this whole document together. Then it's getting approved by the incident commander. Then it's getting briefed out to everybody and then we start looking at what are our next objectives going to be? So it's a process that keeps repeating over and over. And it's not just for our events here, but the ones over in eastern Washington, eastern Oregon. One of the things that I hope you are able to take away from this, summer, there's going to be a number of fires unfortunately east of the mountains. Hopefully we don't have anything here. But if you go online and look up some of the fire incident response things, a lot of this information will suddenly ring a little through you. You go, oh, there's an incident action plan. I can look for it. Or this type of incidents. Or this is a complex. And we'll get to that in a little bit. But some of this terminology, you'll suddenly go, oh yeah, that's what that guy was talking about that one night. So, we danced around a little bit, the incident commander. What do you think the incident commander means on one of these things?
Man with the most experience, most knowledge.
Person with the most.
In charge.
Person with the most experience and the most knowledge. One of the things the incident commander can do is they can do any of the jobs on that list theoretically. If they can't, they get people to assist them. Incident commander may not be an expert on helicopters, so he would bring in somebody to handle the air operations. But at some level, they do have a basic understanding of what's going on and what their needs are and what needs to happen. So with these organization charts, you try and keep it at the smallest possible manageable scale, but you can also expand it or contract it. It's kind of like lungs, is how somebody described it once. It's flexible. It expands or it contracts to take care of whatever the incident is. And when we had the duck bus collision, the interesting thing to me was how that thing changed over time. I was actually standing up on top of the Space Needle when that incident first happened. I had a construction project down below and we would go up every two or three weeks, take some pictures and it was a very good record of what was going on. And then I heard sirens after sirens after sirens. And I looked on the fire department's Twitter site and I saw a mass casualty incident Aurora Bridge. So I knew something was going to be up. I got the call shortly after that. Hey, we need you at the Emergency Operations Center. So we show up down there. Fire is responding to the victims. They're triaging all the victims. They're taking some of them to the hospital. They're moving the rest of the students back to the school. Police department is on scene. They're investigating. We're getting the tow trucks ready. We're taking care of things. Okay, by 11 o'clock news, we should have just taken care of. But it kept going and going. Because then you had to notify the next of kin. There were five people that did not survive the accident. Somebody had to call these people in other countries. So suddenly you had the State Department was also involved in this. Then, as we talked about earlier, you had to reunify them with their property. And this incident was not over by the 11 o'clock news. This actually went on for at least a week and somewhat more. And it- but it expanded and contracted. The fire department was done, I would say probably within three or four hours. They were off-site. The police were there until we got that off-site and to a secure location to secure the evidence. So they were probably on scene till about 1 o'clock and escorting everything back. But then eventually their property room got involved in reunifying people in their property. Kind of were not as much involved in this. But it was kind of interesting how it expanded and then it contracted and expands and contracts. So the incident commander is in charge of overall decision-making on this. They get their direction from you, the executives and senior officials. They understand things from a tactical perspective, but see that going down the road, this may be bankrupting the city, you want to bring them in and say, look, I get what you're trying to do, but is there another way of proceeding on this? How can we deal with this in another way? How should we do- do you have any other suggestions? They're getting input from internal stakeholders and external stakeholders and they're managing the overall incident. Now, where do you guys come in? That's on the next page here in pink. Policy guidance. On the priorities and that are based on what the emergency incident action plan is needing. You're also making sure that if your incident is having trouble getting resources, people or equipment or materials and your incident commander needs help, maybe you have somebody that if they ask you, that you could contact. You can discuss, okay, maybe Bothell is having a similar incident, but you need maybe something more than they do. Could you talk to their mayor and say, look, I have this, this and this going on. I understand you have this other thing. How can we work together on this? Because you have those connections and you work well together. Wait until Carl and the other folks in the emergency management come and request this because we don't want to have 10 people off running in different directions. We all have to work together as a team to make this happen. But you do have roles in all this. Part of your role is right now, giving guidance and approving plans and getting things ready for Carl and the fire department and the police department so that when these incidents happen, they're ready to respond. They can do their thing. During the incident, you actually have less of a role. But then once the incident starts winding down, the media and the others expect some of the information to be coming from you. If Carl and his- his crew need you to get up in front of the press and say things, they'll provide you with the information. But it helps the public to know that you are involved and that you understand what the situation is. And then also as this thing eventually, as it goes on in time, you have responsibilities in how we restore society back to where we were before. So during the incident, not so much of a thing. You're not going and fighting the fire. You're not directing traffic. You're not digging the ditch for the water main that broke. But keep an eye on how things are going and when Carl and others need guidance, that's where your role is. You're in what's called the policy group. He's going to keep you informed. He's going to give you information, keep you up to date on what- the best information he has on what's going on on the incident. And then when he needs guidance or needs help, he will reach out to you and let you know. Any questions on your roles or kind of what we've talked about so far? So the question was, Carl, how are you going to reach out to them?
Our primary structure is we have our Joint Emergency Operations Center that is by both staff members from the city of Kenmore and staff from Lake Forest Park and then supported by fire and- and the utility district. So people like Rob, Carl Lindsey and others play that policy group coordination point. Because we will meet over at the fire station 51 just down the street here to run the incident. That's where we'll have our incident commander, all of our operations section chiefs and planning section chiefs and work through all that. We will keep you here at City Hall and City Hall Lake Forest Park as our policy group. And as we need to get some direction in the middle of the incident or as we move through it, we'll try and gather you together in these locations and then we'll be bringing you a situation update as well as then getting information from you, some guidance from you and some direction from you. Yeah. If phones are available up and working, yeah, we will just be calling you directly and coordinating it much like we do any type of special. much like we do any type of special meeting that comes up. If things are limited in communication, we're still going to be using our North Shore system, so that allows us to directly message via email, text, and voice message if we need to, telling you to report here or to City Hall, Lake Forest Park. In that incident, there was that initial response of get out, see how bad it was, assess the situation, and really, it was a couple of, well, quite a few hours into the event before we knew it was going to be a long-term recovery. We knew the damage was bad enough that it wasn't just going to be a day or two, it was going to be a week or more. At that point, looking, if NEMCO existed at that time, at that point, we would have done everything we could to get everybody together, step up our EOC, and begin to manage that incident from that point collectively. So, for that event, then, policy-wise, there wasn't a whole lot that we would need in that, but we would be getting you guys together, definitely, to just give you an update, get your latest status, and...
To initiate a find-out with that situation.
Yeah. If there's ever a situation where there is no communication, and you feel like you're lacking or want that knowledge or information, you know where we're going to be, and staff is going to be reporting there. So, you're definitely, that's the place to come, to our EOC down at Station 51, to get that information. The great part is, is as you get this training, you know, you walk in, you kind of care to the situation, the status. We would hand you a situation status report, saying, here's where we're at so far, you know, if everything's transparent, we're not hiding anything from anybody, it's there for you to take a look at and get a current update. So, yeah, if you have no communication, that's the best way to do it, is just show up at the EOC, and from that point, we can see what communication might be available or isn't available, or ways we'll get in touch with you.
One thing to keep in mind is that, at the beginning of an incident, things are kind of chaotic and hectic and a little out of control. After a while, it becomes more of a regular kind of event. So, if you see something is out of control and going to be going on for days and days, I would guess you'll probably set up a schedule, and you'll say, look, we're going to have an update briefing at 6:00 in the morning and 6:00 at night, and if you could please attend, Carl will give you a download. And if you can't attend, they'll have a hard copy of something, and they'll give you that information. And that way, if the communication does go down, you still know what to expect. I know in the Seattle Emergency Operations Center, we're usually internally giving each other a one-hour briefing. On the hour, we will update each other. We will have all the information from our different departments, and give just a little stand-up briefing, and go on from there. So, initially, things are a little chaotic, but eventually, you get down to a rhythm, and everybody stays informed that way. Did that get you what you needed? Okay. And, yeah. You know, with his alert, what did you call it, alert North Shore? They can, it's not everybody, they can dial in whoever they need to contact, so they probably have specific groups set aside for North Shore Council, or Lake Forest Park Council, or North Shore Utility District, or City of Kenmore. And they can just ring out specifically to you, either with a text message, or an email, or a phone call, or whatever they need to get you the information as quick as possible. Good question. Any other questions on that? Yeah?
It's a different question altogether, but you did mention it earlier, Eric, costs of these incidents. I was wondering if you're going to touch on that anymore during the course of the evening?
It kind of varies from event to event, and your own city's policies are.
Well, I guess, yeah, and I'm not aware of what our policies are either. I mean, you need to respond to things, obviously, at the moment, but I can imagine many things, a number of things anyway, that could be extremely expensive for my city, to the point that we would really have trouble meeting them.
We will talk a little bit about some of how you prioritize different things, and kind of how we tend to approach incidents, and what our different priorities are in responding to them. So, we'll talk about that a little bit. Maybe let's put that on the parking lot and see if we can find ways to kind of come back to it. Any other questions? Kind of at a midway point? Okay. Does anybody need a break, or can we just keep on going? Need a break? Okay. Why don't we do about five minutes? Come back at 5:00 after.
Because it hurts too much.
Get over there, Brian?
What about...
All right, we'll go ahead and get started again. So, as we get back into it, I just wanted to connect a few of the dots that Eric touched on, just to make it very local and specific to us. There was a couple of things that he said, that he covered, that just popped up in my head. When we was referring to some of the planned events and using the incident command system to handle some planned events, a great example of that here locally, just this last Saturday, we had a 5K race over in Lake Forest Park, and we utilized the ICS structure to help support that race. Now, we aren't the race organizers, City of Lake Forest Park isn't the race organizers, but we were able to fold in some of our volunteers, our amateur radio operators, they created a communication plan, and we're able to come alongside the race organizers with an existing structure, our race, handed it to the race organizers, and they were incredibly impressed how organized and well it worked, and we were able to get that real-time data of where racers were on the race course and were there in case something did happen. Another example of that, that we're working quite a bit in the last couple of months on, is the Special Olympics coming here to Kenmore, and the bowling is going to take place over at Kenmore Lanes. So, we've been working with Special Olympics Washington, and then all of the other agencies, University of Washington's housing all the athletes, and then there's bus companies that are transporting all the athletes, and all that coordination to make sure that that event goes really smoothly. We're setting up our Emergency Operations Center, just to a very low level, just during that event, in case something does happen, it makes it really seamless and easy to handle that. Got it all in place ahead of time, have done a lot of that coordination ahead of time. So, those are a couple of examples how North Shore Emergency Management Coalition's done that here locally. Couple other things, when Eric mentioned the different levels, the state, the fed, and then us here locally, and how we work to get individuals, community partners, and others, non-governmental agencies involved. What NEMCO is doing, just so you're aware and on the same page there, we obviously have our Map Your Neighborhood program, our CERT training to reach out to the individuals. We did a workshop this last weekend for citizens. Again, just always out there, trying to promote preparedness on an individual and family basis. And then we have been reaching out to a lot of the community businesses in our area, so Kenmore Air, Plywood Supply, Bastier, the mall over at Lake Forest Park, and get all those other people and other key service providers, like Puget Sound Energy and others, just to get together twice a year and discuss emergency preparedness and that coordination. And that's part of that stuff that's going on, just to make sure that we've got that communication and coordination kind of ironed out ahead of time.
Carl, is Safeway involved in that, too?
We've invited Safeway, and we've actually, during incidents, relied on Safeway, as well as Albertsons, for food and other things. So, yeah, we're trying to keep them in that loop, being a provider here locally for both of these. And then, one other thing that works out really, really well for our structure, being that we have two cities, the Fire District, two different policing agencies, Public Works, the Utility District, is that when we do have an incident, our EOC structure is such a blend of those different agencies, it makes it that response, a unified command type of response. Nowhere in our structure are Kenmore employees directing Lake Forest Park people, or vice-versa, just like you mentioned, police don't tell fire how to do fire. But that coordination response is already taking place, it's already a little bit of a unified structure. So, when we have an event, if it's a police-driven event, it's an active shooter or something along those lines, police will likely be our incident commander in those roles, whereas if it's a large fire, obviously, fire. If it's a water contamination issue, or supply issue, obviously, the utility, or Public Works, depending on what the event might be. So, it's really nice that we have that, because we've got a lot of subject matter experts right there in our EOC structure, and then depending on the type of event, we can draw from that talent to fill that incident command role. So, it's kind of nice. We have a little unique ability to do that with our shared coalition. So, just wanted to connect a few dots. Thank you. And one of the things to be aware of in incident command system and NIMS is, they try and explain to people, hey, if you need something, try not to be too specific. Try and just tell, what role do you need something to do? So, as an example, we had a snow and ice storm about two years ago in Seattle. It wasn't that big of a deal, but it affected the power, it affected the roads, and so both the power company, City Light, and SDOT, both had crews, excuse me, had crews kind of all over the place, and we were kind of sort of trying to take care of everything. Well, then more and more reports came in of downed power lines, and we were trying to deal with that, and we were asking SDOT, hey, can you go and put somebody near that line, make sure the public doesn't go and touch it? And the response back was, I'm sorry, we're tapped out. We've got everybody responding to everything else, you find some other way of taking care of that. So, we called the cops, and the cops were like, well, we can give you this many, but we've got this other incident going on over here, so I can't give you everything in the store, you need to find something else. Eventually, we started looking for other city agencies that had cars. We didn't need somebody to put the power lines back up, we just needed somebody with a car that could drive to that location, stand there and say, look, don't touch this, don't go near it. So, Carl's got a good bench strength, he can get people from all these different things and get what he needs to kind of take care of whatever problem he's dealing with. So, back to where we were on the slides. What's the difference between somebody that's commanding something and somebody that's coordinating something? You've got a fire chief on the scene, he's giving commands to people, he or she is giving commands to the people that are putting out the fire. As elected officials, are you commanding other people to do things, or are you usually more coordinating things? Much more coordination. So, we try and pay attention to different aspects of that throughout this incident management stuff. Carl, when you're doing things in your EOC, are you ordering people to do? Absolutely not. The EOC is there to coordinate other folks. As much as fire doesn't tell police what to do, and police don't tell the utilities what to do, they don't tell anybody what to do. Carl gets nothing. But Carl brings everybody to the table, and gets everybody on the same sheet of music, and gets everybody working towards the same objectives, and if this person needs something, he'll try and get it from someplace else, just to try and keep the incident moving and get things resolved. So, that, in a nutshell, is kind of what command and coordination is all about. Let's skip forward here a little bit. Delegation of authority. As elected, the mayor, the council, has delegated authority to your department heads to do specific things. You don't delegate things to department heads to do things? The city manager delegates things. You delegate to the city manager to run things.
That's right.
And then the city manager gives direction. Yes. So, likewise, in an incident, if we had somebody, another team, if Carl has been responding to something for two weeks now, his people have been working 12-hour shifts, and he's got two different shifts for two weeks, and they're exhausted, they don't know what the status is of their own house during this big earthquake we had, or whatever, and we need to bring in other teams from Florida, or California, or wherever, somebody needs to give them delegation of authority. They're not just going to come in and suddenly take things over unless they know, okay, you have permission to do this, this, and this, and we will pay for extra. So, delegation of authority is a really big deal, internal to your own city, and more importantly, when you start bringing in other people from other places. So, the back of one of your packets, let's see, oh, it was the one, the picture on here. If you flip to the very back of this, there's kind of a template for delegation of authority. And it gives rough bones, bare bones kind of idea of what kind of things might be involved in delegation of authority, if somebody comes from another team and comes to your town to help out. They may have their own form, because they're used to responding to other incidents across the country, and they see the types of things we run into, are you okay with this, this, and this? Everybody gets things hammered out ahead of time, and then off we go, and Carl's folks get to go off and see their family for the first time in a while. It tells about legal authority on things, how we're going to report stuff, how we're going to communicate different issues, and what the plan is for the ongoing incident, how we respond to it in general. So, in summary, the incident commander is usually the on-scene person, they're direct tactical control of things, they're putting out the fire, they're responding to the riot, they're responding to the march, they're doing the on-scene stuff. You, as senior officials, are giving policy direction to the incident commander, and trying to guide things in general, not specific tactical details, but keeping them in the loop of what you foresee and how you would like things to go from a cost perspective. If you see things are getting too costly or too expensive, you should be having that conversation with your incident commander, and how do we deal with this? And I'm sure there's others involved in the city that are going to be part of that discussion, too, from risk management and elsewhere. Getting a little more to the organization chart. If you flip to this page inside your ICS 201, got kind of an organization tree. Up at the top, it says incident commander, and then there's some little boxes off to the side that say liaison officer, safety information officer. That's what's called the command staff. Liaison officer is somebody that's kind of standing next to the incident commander, and when Carl needs information back to Carl, bugging the incident commander who's got a thousand other things, that's kind of waiting for a break in the conversation of, hey, do we need more food here, or do we need this, or, then you can tell him, hey, no, Carl, I need this, this, and this, get it for me. And that's what the liaison officer does. It's their responsibility for communication back to Carl or other group entities outside the incident commander. It just takes some of the load off of the incident commander, and they don't have to worry about that as much. Same with safety officer. If the incident commander wants to, they can take on that role, and they can be responsible for the safety, or if they've got 10,000 other things they're dealing with, sometimes it's better to have somebody that can just kind of step off to the side and go, hey, we should be watching out for this, this, and this, the winds are getting high, we're expecting a storm, it's going to be nightfall here soon, we're going to need some lights, and things like that. Public information officer, that's somebody that can be standing by near the incident commander, has a good feel for how things are going, can communicate back to the city's public information officer, or can somehow otherwise work with the media, either directly or through others. So, that's what's called the... Underneath that is the general staff, so operations section chief, planning section chief, logistics and finance admin. Anybody remember, we kind of touched on it a little earlier, what does operations section chief do? They're responding to stuff. They are the people that are putting out the fire, they're arresting people, they are fixing the broken water main, they're physically doing the objectives. Planning section, they're responsible for that planning P we had up here. They're responsible for collecting all the documentation from folks, they're responsible for telling everybody, what are we going to be doing over the next 12 or 24 hours. They're also kind of the human resources department. So, if Carl has folks coming in from other jurisdictions or other states, they're going to check through the resource department, resource section in the planning, resource branch in the planning section. Logistics is responsible for getting machinery, getting the gasoline, getting the food, setting things up, setting up a camp where people can recover from the work they were doing. And then, finance and admin, they're responsible for paying for all of it, paying the people that are going to be working there. Have a division of responsibilities, and, you know, if you've got an incident that's a car crash, it's only going to be a few hours, you're not going to have all these things to worry about. But if you have an OSO, something that's going to last for days and days, the incident commander can't deal with all this by themselves. and days, the incident commander can't deal with all this by themselves. So if you back to any, it's kind of highlighted in this pink section in the corner about who does what, but at some level, that kind of describes everything we were just talking about. Yeah, yep. You just type in ICS 201? But like I said, I keep a photocopied version in my briefcase, and it's there if I need They do want to talk in here about modular organization. It's from the top down, and we talked about earlier, it kind of breeds. So you can have as small a group as you need for like a car incident. It can grow larger if you have a major local incident, or it can get deepwater horizon size. We already talked about expanding incidents a few times. Have a good graphic kind of on the top of this, some photos and some little org charts off on the side, and that's basically talking about the same thing we just discussed. They're very repetitive in this ICS stuff. So at the bottom, you have a very simple incident. There's a car accident. The ambulance responds. You've got two or three people are part of your org chart. Or you have a major building collapse. Suddenly, your org chart is much larger with a lot more people and a lot more responsibilities. So up here, Lake Forest Park, Kenmore. What kind of unique things might play into either a man-made or a natural incidence that you might experience on a regular basis up here, on an annual basis? You mentioned power outages earlier. You had a 10-day. Has PSE gotten those sorted out, or they're still working through all that?
No, they've gotten much better.
They're getting better. Okay. What about landslide? Okay. And landslides are tricky because they end up just escalating what other incidents may already be happening. So you might already have a power outage, but then the landslide complicates how they respond to that. What other kind of things happen? Flooding? Mm-hmm. Got incidents?
Boating.
Boating incidents? Yeah.
Airplane crash.
Could, could.
That has been for a long time, thank goodness.
So yeah, you've got a full spectrum of things that could be happening throughout here, and it's good to have this system that can respond to any of these. It's flexible enough that it can work for any of these. So part of that is by setting objectives and keeping it pretty simple and basic. We're all going to work together. We're going to do this. We're going to do that. We're going to do this. And then everybody knows what's going on. Everybody's working together, unity of effort to try and resolve these issues. Now, at the bottom, talk about overall priorities. The first priority on any one of these incidents is life safety, both for the responders and for the people that are involved in the incident initially. That's our first priority, is life safety. The second priority is stabilizing the event, stabilizing the incident. So we're trying to get the accident off the road. We're trying to get the burning building under control. We're trying to clear up the landslide and prevent it from coming down anymore. Then after that, we're trying to deal with the property issues and the environmental. So I don't know how many overturned fish trucks I had to deal with on the highways. And initially, we were very worried about the property involved in that. And then finally, it was pointed out to us that, no, that's on the highway. They'll get their stuff back, but your priority is to clear the incident. So that changed how we responded to things a lot more. We made sure everybody was taken care of from a life safety perspective, and then we had to stabilize the incident, and then we worried about property. And now there's starting to be a fourth item that we add on here. It's societal restoration. So if you have a school shooting, or if you have explosion, how is the community recovering from that? How do we get things back to normal, or is this the new normal? So these are other things that we pay attention to. Any questions on those? Those are usually pretty big topics. But at least you have an idea of how Carl and the fire service, the police are going to react to incidents that they're seeing. Incident stabilization, and then property and the environment. Okay, we talked about the incident action plan. That was that big, thick document. First, we start out with the little stubby pencil version, and then we work up to something that everybody has had some input on. We set our objectives. We set our tactics. We figured out what kind of resources we need to take care of our tactics, and then we printed it out and briefed everybody on it. If you do take a look at the incident action plan that I've got there, I did take out, there's a couple of pages that talk about what frequencies people are on, what people's cell phone numbers are on. You'll see that if we have an incident action plan in the future, that kind of information's in there, but it's the one that I brought here tonight. They do give some examples of how we're trying to do better and better on being able to work interoperable with each other, getting on the same frequencies, having communications that work well together. Your work on PCERN, you want to explain that in a minute or two?
We're just going to new system that will be more integrated. PCERN's not a fire department issue. It's a county-wide issue, and we're upgrading our communication system from 800 megahertz to 900 megahertz, and adding a lot more towers and more channels so that we can coordinate communications across disciplines. In short, it's a bigger project than...
Yeah, it's a huge project. It's one of the things we try and exercise more and more when we're practicing with folks, is getting them to use some of the other channels, to be able to talk back and forth with each other, and being able to communicate better. Every time we have an incident, that's one of the major things we hear from folks, is communication was an issue. And we're trying to detail that out a little more and not just keep it as a broad issue like that, but which frequencies did you have trouble with? Who did you have trouble communicating with? How do we make that better? Again, the more we can all be on the same page, the quicker we can get these incidents solved, the quicker we can get back to normal.
And along with that, something I'm involved in is the E911 system, the upgrade to it, because more and more technology's changing. They're getting rid of the copper wires, and they're all cell phones. So people are wanting to text. They're wanting to send pictures, all on 911. So all of that has to be accounted for, and that equipment has to be replaced, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a next-generation 911 system that's coming online. I think Richland or somebody just came online in the last few weeks, and county by county, they're kind of bringing them up to speed. And it's interesting because our office at King County Office of Emergency Management shares the same building as the King County 911 Center down in Renton. So we're very closely tied with them, and we talk with them all the time.
And on the state level, and we're sort of coordinating the whole thing and rewriting all the legislation that goes with it.
Excellent. Okay. Let's talk about unified command. So we talked about it a little bit with the example of the Greenwood explosion. So we had something bad happen. Fire responded. Police responded. Department of Transportation responded, and PSE responded. And as a group, there was usually one member, one senior official from each of those organizations at daily meeting, and out what the objectives were going to be. And they would work together as a team to say, okay, we need to do this. We need to do this. But I still need to be able to check out my control, or control my crime scene while you're doing your restoration process on the rest of the system. So it comes back to this, cops don't tell fire what to do. Fire doesn't tell utilities what to do, and utilities doesn't tell cops what to do. But as a group, they can give direction, and they can help each other, and work together in a unity of effort. I keep saying that same thing, but that's because it's so important to getting these things done fast. Does that make sense? Is there any questions about unified command? Because this is going to expand here in about two seconds to something even bigger. Okay. So we have this thing up here on the board. We talked about simple 911 was a type 5 event. And a type 1 event, you made the national news. Well, what's the difference between something that made the national news locally here and the deepwater horizon thing that affected five states? That's something you can see from space. You didn't just make national news. You made international news with that. And everybody and their brother is trying to get all the oil booms, all the skimmers, all of this, all of that. And there needs to be somebody that is kind of saying, okay, how are we going to deal with this? Because I've got this incident commander over here in Louisiana. I've got this incident commander over here in Miami. I've got this incident commander over here in Alabama, and they all want the same stuff. So who decides? Whoever's got the biggest Rolodex? No. They did that initially, and it didn't work so I think the president finally stepped in. They set up unified command. If you go up there later on, you can see there were three people, and they set up this area command. They could tell, they aren't telling the different incident commanders how to deal with their local incident, but they're getting the request from this commander that says, look, I need 500 oil skimmers. This person says, I need 300, and this person says, I need 200, or whatever. I'm not an oil skimmer person, but you get the idea. And from their perspective, they can kind of decide, okay, this one is going to affect an entire city's water supply. This one is going to be affecting this bird population. And they can kind of weigh the pros and cons of all the different requests and allocate the resources. That's where this area command thing comes in play. Can you think of where that might play in around here? Where would we ever see area command? There's two things I can think of. Possibly on a highway. How are you thinking? Okay, if something crosses a border, that's usually a lot of times where something would happen. There was a terrorist attack in Paris back in 2015 or 16. The initial attack was at the soccer stadium, and they were trying to cause a lot of ruckus, get people to evacuate, and then cause a bigger incident. At the same time, there was an attack on a concert that was going on in another part of the city. And then in a third part of the city, you had gunmen going up and down the street attacking restaurants and bars. So you had three different parts of the city, geographically distributed, potentially in different counties here, and they're all going to want cops. They're all going to want fire. They're all going to want the same resources. How do you decide how that's going to happen? We actually have a project that we're working on, King County, Pierce County, and Snohomish County collaboratively, and the police, fire, emergency management, dispatch, all together to try and look at these types of situations, and how would we respond if something like that happened in the Puget Sound area. And that's a project we're going to be working on over the next three years. It's just amazing. If you thought cops and fire didn't talk to each other, try getting cops and fire from different counties to talk to each other.
Is that Cascadia Rising?
No, Cascadia Rising is more the earthquake scenario. This is what we're referring to as a complex coordinated terrorist attack. So CETA is the acronym. We're about nine or 10 months into it, and we've got about another two years, and we'll be having multiple exercises and drills and working together with folks on that. So it's looking pretty good. Everybody's got basically the same game plan now. We just need to make sure that everybody understands it the same, and there's no nuances that we're all missing. So it's looking pretty promising. Back to area command. You said Cascadia Rising. ...quake that ripped between Vancouver, British Columbia, and the northern California border. Everybody between California and DC is going to want a lot of the same resources. They're all going to want fuel. They're all going to want water. They're all going to want power. And there's only going to be so much to go around. So at some level, I can completely see where there is going to be an area command. And the local folks are going to get their needs together and communicate this up to the area command and say, you need, this is what we're trying to respond to. And then the limited resources will be delegated out that way. That make sense? Yeah.
What happens if there is like the big one with the 9.0 or thereabouts, and then I-5 is broken up and not passable in multiple places up and down the corridor, and neither is I-90, and the airport runways are cracked in a disaster of that magnitude? How's stuff going to get in?
Right now, over the last few years, actually more than that, I'm not sure how many years WashDOT's been working on it. I know the I-405 corridor has, a lot of the bridges have been reinforced, and they've been trying to focus, they had a decision to make early on about whether they should focus more on 405 or I-5. And the amount of retrofits on 405 were more cost-effective and quicker to do and implement than I-5. So that was their initial focus. That was their lifeline that they were trying to implement on a north-south basis. There's another project that's in the works now for the last year or so, compiling all these different engineering studies and different modeling things, and what are the capabilities of all the different airports, and just a really broad spectrum thing that I think it's Argon National Laboratories is heading up for homeland security, looking at how do we get the supplies from the east side of the mountains to here. There's also plans in place where Pacific Fleet comes up from Southern California. But the thing to keep in mind there, it's at least seven days from when they start steaming. And they can't start steaming as the instant this thing happens. So it's going to take them a few days to get things onto the ships, get the ships ready, and start moving. So that's why things are a little squishy on how much should we tell people to prepare for. Is it three days? Is it two weeks? I think where we're giving guidance to people now is prepare as much as you possibly can. You don't have to take a big bite right away, but whatever you can do now, and then next year, and a little more next year, gets you better prepared.
And one of the things locally that we're working on that is in its infancy, but we're making strides, is coordination and working with Kenmore Air, larger group, boat pilots that are in the area. We just recently had a drill where we worked with Kenmore Air and a bunch of volunteer pilots that are from Jefferson County, and they've arranged volunteers to bring in float planes, because one of the things they've found in other incidents around the world is that they have access when roads and bridges are down, and they can get supplies. So once again, we have a huge asset right here in our backyard where we could play a key role in moving a lot of supplies after that type of catastrophic event. And so the first few steps are coordinating with Kenmore to find out what their needs really are, what the capabilities are, and how we might be able to support that with our volunteer network that we have. It'd be a pretty powerful tool.
Is there a plan if the dock and such is not accessible? Let's say if the locks go and we lose feet out of the lake, is that part of your plan, that you've had ability to plant on?
It is part of the plan. And interestingly enough, the locks conversation was one that came about out of that last, our little drill that we had here a month ago, Brian? Anyway, we talked about that. So setting up multiple lines of communication, including ham radio communications with the Army Corps of Engineers who control the locks, to determine what the stability is of them, because they've identified it as a weak point in the system. But the great part of it is float planes can land in some pretty areas. And so even with a reduced lake level, we still, there's some ways to maneuver stuff.
So we're getting towards the home stretch. Now we're going to start talking about things like the Emergency Operations Center. And not just Carl's Emergency Operations Center here in Kenmore, but also the county's Emergency Operations Center where I work, and then the state's Emergency Operations Center, and then the feds have their own incident command centers that they deal with. And the thing that we do is coordination. We're not putting out the fires. We're not directing these folks on how to deal with things. But we're getting information from folks. We're putting it back out to the incident commanders, giving them a good view of what's going on. An example I like to give is many fish truck incidents. It was pushing 90, 95 degrees that day, and the truck turned over. We were doing our thing. We put the fish out of the way, or the crab, or whatever we had that day, and we were trying to reopen the road. The problem was, and the... The problem was, and the incident commander who was on scene dealing with the thing, doing what they needed to do. What they couldn't see was that there was a stretch of traffic between the last off ramp and this incident that they couldn't go anywhere. They were stuck. Which is fine for 10, 15 minutes, maybe a half hour. But now it's 90, 95 degrees. These people weren't planning to be out here. What's happening after an hour? What's happening after two hours? Do they need to use the bathroom? Do they have water? Do they have other needs? So we were able from Emergency Operations Center, we could see things on the video. We could contact the liaison officer that was there next to the incident commander. So we're not bugging them on their phone, but when there was a break in the conversation, liaison officer could say, hey, we noticed the folks in traffic. We want to worry, a little concerned about how they're doing. Are you okay if we delegate somebody to go and check on them? And the incident commander said, sure, that's fine. So we didn't tell them what to do, we just pointed out, hey, we noticed this, what do you want us to do? And move forward. That was a great example of how we coordinate stuff. Likewise, the example I gave you of the downed power lines in the winter storm. We had a request from the power company, they needed some help. We tried a couple of different sources and then eventually found them something that would work. So that's what Carl does at his Emergency Operations Center. He's taking in information, both from the general public, their social media things, from the state, from the county, from any source he can get. And then he's distilling it down and he's telling the folks that are responding to the incident. And we're also taking that same information and giving it to you, the senior officials. So that you have the best available information that we have as soon as we have it. Hold anything back because we know that you guys have a bunch of folks that you're responsible to. And you need as much of an understanding of the situation as they do. And the thing to understand, that's the big thing out of all this. It's the system that we're all trying to do. We're all trying to communicate with each other. I could be out in a pup tent somewhere, as long as I have a radio and a computer and I can get that information collected and I can sort it out and feed it back to Carl and the rest of the folks. It's not about my business, it's the process that we're all trying to use and get the information back and forth. Any questions on that? Pretty straightforward. Now, does Carl talk to, Carl, do you talk to the media? Little is possible. Do you have a PIO? Okay, so most emergency operations centers have somebody that had to work with the media, get them the story that they need. Because that's what their business is, they're, they need stories, they need to be able to explain the situation. And tell what's your side of the story is. Give as much information as you can and keep the public informed. But having that- Rest of their job. So I don't know if you guys have a JIC at your place, but a lot of emergency operations, bigger you get, have a dedicated room with a bank of phones. And the media has that contact number, they can contact us, they can get that information. We can ask them, okay, what's your deadline? What are you trying to find out? We can talk to different people out in the field, get the information and inform the public about what's going on. So that's what a public information officer does, a joint information center does, is they're getting all this information and packaging it out to the media and getting them what they need. More and more, the other thing they're doing is they're monitoring social media to see what the public is telling folks. That was one of the things that came out of Hurricane Katrina, was much more of a focus on, the public was putting out their own information. And this has continued hurricanes in Texas and Florida ever since then. And so emergency managers are paying more and more attention to this and learning some of the trusted sources and who's, how they can kind of compile all that information in a way that makes sense. So the other important thing out of those joint information centers is getting you information that you can put out to the public. Because you have responsibility to your constituents. So Carl is giving them any information, they are getting it ready for you, putting out their press releases. And then typically the mayor and council members are standing up together as a joint group and giving the public the information. You may not agree behind closed doors, but when you come out in front of the public, you need to all be speaking from the same sheet of music. Because the whole goal out of this is we're trying to resolve the incident, trying to get this thing finished up as soon as we can. That make sense? Any questions? Okay. So you talked about earlier, what if there was an accident out here that kind of crossed borders? So we kind of talked about area command. Usually the fire and police already have policies in place of who's going to respond and take care of stuff. But if you have something bigger like a wildfire or landslide or something broad scale that's going to last days and days, then yeah. You would have a lot more coordination between different jurisdictions. And like Bothell's kind of in a strange situation because they're actually, they got two counties to worry about out of all of that too. So King County and Snohomish County work very closely on a lot of these types of incidents. And then after we have, we have an after action report where we've been documenting things as it goes throughout the process. And then we look at, okay, what went really well? What are any areas that we need to work on in the future? And were there any things that are just, what are the priorities of those things that need work? And then part of my job is to take those after action reports, look at the things that need additional training or additional practice. And try and incorporate those in the things that we do over the next following months or years. So that's why the action incident, after action reports are so important. We use-
I'm thinking kind of more of the smaller events or smaller incidences. But is that something that's typically shared? For example, any feedback from the pack the park, fun run that could be shared globally as the pros, you know, what came out of that? Is that something that you would typically do?
Yeah, we generate some sort of after action report for pretty much any of our training drills, exercise. In the past, we haven't been always really good at distributing that widely, partially just because I didn't want to inundate people that didn't want a bunch of emails and stuff that weren't going to read anyway. So normally, I'd always pass it on to Brian or Chief Sutton or a few key people that wanted the information and utilized it. If it's something that you definitely want to know more about, we have all that and can forward that.
I think the more information that gets shared, you know, Kenmore does an event and there's something to be learned from that. It would be unfortunate if we had a similar event and we weren't able to learn from that prior experience.
Okay. So the final section to talk about is mainly just understanding that there are a number of plans already out there in place. Carl has talked about a number of the plans that he already has. As council members and senior officials, be aware that there's things that are already in place that previous councils have either reviewed and signed off on. Or that maybe Carl may be bringing back to you in the future and saying, you know, we passed that back in 2005, but since then, this, this and this has changed. We've updated the plan and now we're doing this. Carl may be coming back to you with different plans in the future, looking for some feedback on if their update to the plan makes sense or if you want to have some more feedback on what goes on. Also, the thing that's very important is understand that people retire. People leave the city. And Carl needs to keep training new people and keeping more and more people in the loop on how all of this process works. So he's continually getting people brought in, he's bringing in the community, it's kind of an ongoing process. And you mentioned you've done some credentialing so that you can work in the city's EOC. Do you want to explain real quick what that means?
Carl might have to, I just submitted my documentation, I'm a certified safety officer, so I've filled that role a couple of times with the Seattle.
So it basically says what your experience has been and where you've-
Yeah. Yeah, we've got a process in place to credential volunteers ahead of time. So we run them through a background check and credentialing, Stacy's been through that. So anyone that goes through our CERT program or who is a certified ham radio license holder, we allow either of those to go through our credentialing process. We do the background check, make sure that they're, they pass that and have had the basic ICS courses, 100, 200, 7 and 8. And then we will generate a credential badge for them as an identified volunteer. So post disaster, we don't have that onslaught of volunteers showing up and then like trying to figure out, okay, well, where can we utilize them and what's their skills? We've already kind of sorted out a large group of them. To date, we have NEMCO wide, about 50 of those folks that have gone through that process. And they vary in background from, you know, retired medical professionals, doctors, nurses, engineers, architects, people who have specific roles like safety officer that can fill different capacities. So we have just general volunteers and then we're trying to build out an infrastructure of lots of diverse talented folks we have in our community, so.
That's one of the things that these, this colorful badge that I got on is about. Is in the last year or two, a number of jurisdictions have kind of gotten together and agreed on a common format and kind of a common system that deals with some of these credentialing issues. And so if people are responding on the scene, it's already in the computer somewhere and they can just kind of use their badge and show people, okay, pull this up, this is what I can do, this is my experience, this is what I'm qualified for. So the other thing that we're in the process of rolling out is a piece of software. Different emergency operations centers can all use to kind of talk to each other. It's called Web EOC. And so as different local jurisdictions use it, they have their incident, they're dealing with it, they're keeping things up. So we at the county can look at it and see what's happening in Lake Forest Park and Kenmore versus Bellevue versus Seattle. If there's resources that they need, whether it's a front end loader or 20 people, we can, they will put that request in. We can see it from our end and ask around other jurisdictions inside the county and see if we can get that material for them. If we can't, then the state is also using the same piece of software and we can elevate that request up to them. And then they will deal with it at their level. And if they don't have it, I'm not sure that the feds are using Web EOC, they're probably using some version of it. But at least on the state level, we're all very much in sync with the software that we're using. So that's a really good thing that's only been so that everybody's starting to standardize on the same software. Okay. So the closing thing for you as elected officials out of all this, your role is to get the information from Carl. Understand, give guidance as requested. You have more of a big picture view for how you want your city to operate, how you want things to go down in the future. And be able to give them encouragement and feedback what you're hearing also from the community. Likewise, you're hearing things from Carl and the incident commanders, you need to be able to find ways to communicate that back to your constituents. That's part of what your role is in all of this, is to be able to communicate what you're seeing and feeling and hearing out of the incident commanders and out of the Emergency Operations Center. And to give that confidence back to the citizens of what you're seeing. Any questions out of this or any of what we've talked about tonight? It was a lot. Like I said, if you can, keep some of this handy, look at it in a few days, maybe over the weekend, breeze through it. Just try and refresh yourself a little bit, it'll probably make a little more sense the second time through. And then if you got time, two weeks from now, give it a third look and then you'll be ready for anything that happens. Yeah?
The 100 series, just really quick. And the level of detail is amazing. I mean, the fact that somebody thought of the tribes. You know, off the top of my head, I'm not sure that would have come to me first, but it should. And there was a little section there on pets, what do you do with pets in an emergency? I never would have thought of the pets either. So I mean, they didn't forget anything. It's incredibly detailed and lots and lots of words, but they were very thorough.
If you have time and you have the interest, go online and type ICS 100. It's an online course, it's free, there's no charge for it. And there's like an online test at the end of the thing to show that you did, and you get a certificate out of the whole thing. Okay, Lake Forest Park you were recording? Okay. It's worthwhile. It gives you a much more detailed view of what we've kind of covered in an hour and a half here tonight. And all these courses do tend to kind of reinforce what the previous courses were all talking about with some additional information.
Well, thank you, Eric. Throughout tonight, he obviously said Carl this, Carl that, Carl's EOC, Carl's staff. And that's for simplicity sake, obviously. It is, it is the staff that you have hired at each of your jurisdictions that fills all of the roles of our system. My role primarily in activation is the EOC manager. I mean, sure the lights are on, they have pens, computers work, you know, the generator's functioning so that they can do the job that they know how to do. And you've hired some great people, you have some great staff, we've gone through just a few training exercises and we continue to take small steps and build that confidence. It is, our structure is kind of unique in that we're a blend of four agencies. But I think that we've, we've seen some real progress and making some great headway. And I thank you for your leadership and support of that. I think it's a very efficient way to serve our community. And I think that, you know, it relies on the strengths of the staff that we are to hand. So it's working well, from my opinion. And again, I'm just a piece of that puzzle. So thank you, thank you for your time tonight and for being here. Happy to answer any questions now, later, via email, a month from now, whenever, but thank you again, appreciate it.